Good morning, everybody. It's 9 o'clock, yes. This is the Finance Committee meeting. Can we have a roll call, please? All right, wait, let me call to order.
Commissioner Lloyd, Commissioner Winfrey, Commissioner Ellenberg, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Avery, Commissioner Shoemaker, Commissioner Kuzinaw, Commissioner Wayhill, Commissioner Davis. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Any question and discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Is there any public comment to the committee? Public comment to the committee? Last chance, public comment to the committee. Hearing none. Communications?
None.
We have none. Old business. We do have a resolution 2024-155. I move approval of proposed ARPA funding allocation for the YMCA.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any question and discussion? Hearing, is there?
Oh, I just wondered if you could say the amount for the audience.
It's an even $200,000.
Okay.
Any other question and discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion has passed. Next, new business. I move Resolution 2024-123, Approval of a Request by Genesee County's Parks and Recreation Commission to Apply for Grant in the Amount of $400,000 from the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund for the Purpose of Renovating Historic Pavilions. It's been moved, and this grant requires a 26% match that's available from the current budget. It's been moved and supported. Is there any question and discussion?
Could you just mention the match amount? I think it was $147,000.
Let me double check.
Yes.
That is correct. Commissioner.
$147,000. Okay. All right, thank you, just, you know, for clarification.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellenberg. All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I move Resolution 2024-126, Approval of Request by Genesee County's Parks and Recreation Commission to Apply for Grant in the Amount of $400,000 from the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund for the Purpose of Developing Sports Fields at the City of Flint's Burston Fieldhouse. This grant requires a 26% rent match and will be provided by the Friends of Burston. Here, a support. It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Can we have a little more explanation on this, how this is going to work?
So with our agreement with the City of Flint in the partnership agreement, we are allowed to apply for grants for park property. So this is going to be a pass through. What we're looking at for this part of the project is for the sports fields, specifically the lighting for those fields.
So, just to be clear for the residents, all we're doing is basically paperwork portion of it, and the rest is handled elsewhere.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional question and discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I move approval, I mean, yes. I move 2024-165, Approval of a Request by the Genesee County's Health Department to Create, Post, and Fill One Environmental Health Sanitarium Position. No additional appropriation is needed.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I move Approval of 2024-197, Forwarding to Receive and File a Copy of the Paid County Bills for the Weeks Ending 121, 2024, 128, 2024, and 24, 2024, in the Total Amount of $10,829,653.57.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I move 2024-200, Approval of a Proposed Budget Amendment to 2023-2024 Appropriations Resolution for Various Line Items as Described in the Attached Budget Adjustment Request.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. I move Approval of 2024-204, Approval of a Request to Increase Hourly Wages of Non-Union Staff at Genesee County's Community Action Resource Department to $15 per hour.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Let's have question and discussion.
Madam Chair, I just want to give my hat off to Director Pam Coleman for the outstanding job she did. This has been a long time of discussion, and we finally arrived at, you know, some degree of equity for some of the workers at G Card. So kudos to Ms. Coleman.
Thank you, Commissioner Winfrey. Commissioner Ellenberg.
And just really to kind of go on to his comment, if you've never been over to G Card and see some of the work that they do, and, you know, the jobs that are required, you know, $15 is definitely, you know, a kudos and thank you for doing that, and hopefully that we can retain some of the workers that we have at that price. And so anyway, I'm really happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellenberg. And I want to echo those comments, too. I've been over to G Card and helped pack some of those boxes of foods. My church packed 420 boxes, I think, last Saturday. So the work that they do on the weekends, the work that they do all the time, every day, they are super dedicated, and we're happy that this has come before us. Any further question, discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next one is, let's see, I think that's it. Oh, okay, good. Any other business? All right, motion to adjourn? We're adjourned. Thank you. 9:07. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Lloyd, Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuzinaw, Commissioner Wayhill, Commissioner Davis. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Any question and discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Is there any public comment to the committee for government ops? Public comment? Last chance for public comment. Moving on to communications. I don't think we have any communications.
Communications.
Old business. Move Approval of Resolution 2024-118, Approval of an Agreement Between Genesee County and Plant Moran for Continued Healthcare Consulting Services.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion? We have Anita and Emily, who are going to give a little background.
Good morning. There were some questions at the last board meeting last week, so we've invited Plant Moran, or in our case, Emily Sharnovsky from Plant Moran Group Benefit Advisors, their healthcare arm of Plant Moran, to answer any additional questions you have. She has slides, which I think have been provided to you, and she can go through those slides, or she can answer questions, whichever you like. There's not a lot. I promise there's not 32 slides or anything. How would you wish to move forward?
Well, I'll ask any of the commissioners if they have any questions regarding the PowerPoint that's been provided. I think everybody has a copy of it. Commissioner Ellenberg.
I just have a question. I just, to you, Madam Chair, to you. Is everything going smoothly? I mean, with the programs that are put in place now?
Yes, they are. Some of the, so first of all, thank you for the opportunity to answer some questions and actually provide this information. As you all will notice on the last slide, so Slide 4, we had an opportunity to pull out some of the recent results that we've achieved together with a county. And one of the hallmarks that was just recently achieved that I want to point out is through RFP process with the current pharmacy benefit manager, the county is estimated to reduce pharmacy expense by about $1.2 million a year without actually any change to employee or retiree or any of the family members' benefits. And really was able to achieve that really through bidding and re-contracting with the incumbent, which is awesome ultimately, right? That's a fantastic win. In terms of the new programs that have been put in place for the active population and those retirees who mirror the active population, those continue to run well, not only in terms of probably the most important thing, which is how employees and their families, retirees and their families are experiencing their benefits, but also they really position the county to take advantage of some of the reasons for making that change. So from a strategic perspective, making sure that there's some cost containment measures in place.
Madam Chair? Yes, go ahead.
Just a question, even though I might, I don't think it pertains to anything that we offer, but my husband is a retiree from GM, and it's with HAP. But I do know that Blue Cross Blue Shield offers the same thing for retirees, and they offer memberships to some of the health facilities. So like Planet Fitness, like if you, you know, it's a free membership for them to go to that. I know that there's a SNAP gym. So do we offer that to our retirees?
Yeah, so as you may recall, last year, the folks who are mirroring the current active employees were offered, the retirees who are Medicare eligible were offered and are on an ETNA Medicare Advantage Plan, and that's a plan that has a passive network so they can continue to see their doctors. As part of that plan, there's a program called Silver Sneakers. No additional cost to the member, no additional cost to the county. And again, just as a recollection, that actually right now for the medical component is costing the county and retirees nothing. So for the whole program, the Medicare Advantage Plan. Part of that, the Silver Sneakers program allows folks on that plan to access gyms, a variety of a network of gyms throughout the country for no charge. Sometimes there's some constraints about when you can go to the gym. I know that, depending on the unique gym. But yep, that's part of the program that's offered to those who are on the ETNA Medicare Advantage Plan right now.
Well, I know there's some insurance programs that reward, you know, their customers by either being on a program like that, or they reward them, like if they don't smoke. They reward them. And I think that program is something that we should look into, you know, especially with the rise of, you know, people are still smoking, and now they're vaping. They think that that's better, that we should reward them if they're not doing that. And even if it's just little things, that could be cost savings in the long run.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's something that you would look into?
It certainly, it certainly can be. Absolutely, it would fall likely under the purview of the Healthcare Coalition in that we had kind of the big things to first. We worked with the Healthcare Coalition, first of all, for about, oh, a good 18 months, helping the membership of the Coalition really get a behind-the-scenes education on what goes into the considerations of running a health plan. So we did probably a college-level course, Healthcare or Health Plan 101, 201. And we did that so that we could really work on getting a good foundation for all the programming. Now we can start looking at some of those additional programs like wellness and well-being programming to layer on because we have a solid platform to build on. So yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, good point.
Is there any other question and discussion? I want to applaud you. $1.2 million per year is a significant amount of savings. And so the, all the regular meetings and the communication back and forth, scanning, talking with the vendor management program, just hats off to you for, and to your team for getting this savings, making it a reality. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
I just want to tell you, thank you for coming. My next, my next question is, though, just a simple statement from there to, through you, if I may, is the fact is, I realize the wonderful job they've done, or this board may believe they've done. Unfortunately, again, this was not sent out for a bid. It is, this year, if I'm reading it correctly, That is not our money.
No.
It's taxpayer dollars. And on top of it, you know, I used to have, if you guys remember, and I'm dating myself, a Nextel phone, if everyone remembers. You'd press the button, go beep beep, and in the most inconvenient time, you'd actually interrupt somebody's day. Now, if I would have stuck with that process instead of now I have a lovely Apple phone that I can shut off and nobody can beep in on me, but they can send me a text and everything else like that. If I hadn't have looked and at least saw what is out there, I wouldn't know what is out there. And not that they are not probably the choice to use, but the fact is, we don't know. We don't know what's out there because we didn't go for an additional bid. We didn't go talk to anyone else. And we've been continuing on this path since 2020. So that'll be four years, and things change. Things organizations will do, or things organizations can do for us. So with that, I appreciate what they've done, but for me, it's not my money. It's taxpayer dollars. So I will be voting no, not because I disagree that they do a nice job, but the fact is, we have not expanded our horizons to understand what is out there to benefit our employees and our retirees. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker. Your comments have been so noted. Additional question and discussion? All right.
Madam Chair, I agree with Commissioner Shoemaker in theory, but I think in this case, I think the historical knowledge is very important. I'll be voting for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Winfrey. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion has carried.
Thank you.
All right, move Approval of 2024-160. This is under new business. Approval of an Agreement Between Genesee County and Gerber Life in an Amount Not to Exceed $702,559 to Provide Stop Loss Insurance for Employee Healthcare Coverage.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker?
Can we have a little more explanation of, I kind of understand it, but how we got to this number if we've, you know, followed certain processes?
Morning.
Morning again.
Morning. Good timing. Emily from Plant Moran's here, and this is part of what they do for us. So I will let her explain stop loss and which plan it's on. We'll try to keep it short so we can move on.
Yeah. Can you repeat your question just so that I can make sure that I've answered it?
I'm pretty sure I have an understanding of what stop loss insurance is. What I'm trying to get to is you guys, obviously, are not providing the insurance.
Correct.
You found us a carrier.
Correct.
For the insurance.
Yep.
If I may, Madam Chair, sorry.
Go ahead.
Keep going. So my question is, did, when you found this carrier, this is someone you regularly work with?
So we actually do a full RFP on the stop loss procurement. Stop loss is absolutely more of a commodity, right? But you need to make sure, one of the considerations for us is, is the stop loss insurance company a solid insurance company? Are they A or better rated? So can they pay the claims, right? And the second consideration is, can they actually handle the county's programming? The county's program is, programming, as you all can see, is very complicated. So that is not a light consideration, right? We need to make sure that the stop loss carrier can actually understand and pay claims when they're supposed to pay claims. Just as a reminder, one of the things that we made sure happened was that there's stop loss coverage on both the medical and the pharmacy component of the county's arrangements. It used to be just on the medical component. And as you all know, the price of medications, especially some of those newer emerging treatments which are transformative, those can easily bankrupt an organization. So really important to have that stop loss. This is the second year that we have gone out and marketed stop loss, which is inclusive of both components. We did a full RFP. We have some preferred vendors, to answer your question, Commissioner Shoemaker, because of really the administration piece, but we're agnostic in the marketplace. This happened to be a vendor that the third-party administrator has worked with before. We have, it's the first time we've placed stop loss insurance with Gerber, but Gerber has been around. They're a solidly rated organization. They're actually working on the process of paying the first claim at this point as well. So that's how we got there. There was a bidding war, actually, because like all commodity products, they wanted to win the business, so they did.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Additional questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Move Approval of 2024-168, Approval of a Request by Genesee County's Department of Geographic Information Systems to Travel to the Imagine GIS Conference at Crystal Mountain, Michigan. The dates of the travel are June 2nd through 4th, 2024. Total cost for three staff members not to exceed $2,196.81. This is a budgeted expense. It's been moved and supported. Question, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Move Approval of 2024-196, Approval of an Agreement Between Genesee County and Campaign Finance US in an Amount Not to Exceed $36,000 to Provide Campaign Finance Software at Genesee County's Clerk Register. The term of this agreement is January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2026. The cost for this agreement will be paid from account 1010-215, blah, blah, blah.
Support.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. We do have Clerk Clemens here to kind of give us some background on this motion.
Thank you. I'd first like to start off by introducing Allison Rogers, who is shadowing our office today to see good government in action, and that's certainly what we hope we can provide. While I am not familiar with a Nextel phone, I can tell you this campaign finance software is the latest and greatest in cutting-edge technology. So this is with a vendor that we're currently providing service with that shows online all of the campaign finances for all of the candidates in the county. What this contract does is renews that service, but it's a little bit more than it has previously been in the past, which is why we're coming to you for the board because there's an additional fee there for turning on the feature of electronic campaign finance reporting. We tried to build a system that was as simple and easy for our candidates to use to allow folks to file electronically their campaign finance reports, A, so they don't have to drive down to the county building and wait in line with other vital records customers, but B, in the case that a candidate does turn in a campaign finance report late, usually those reports are due on a Friday by 4 o'clock. And if you miss that, you are already three days behind in fees. By having this online system, you can turn it in Friday evening and not have additional fees. You can turn it on Saturday and only have one day of fees. So it's really saving money for all of our candidates running for public office. The other thing I will note is, while this says $36,000 is the cost, that is the three-year cost. So what we're actually paying is $12,000 per year for this contract, which I think is a fairly small and a very responsible amount for service that will provide so much to our community.
All right, questions? Commissioner Shoemaker?
To you, Madam Chair. Also, I think, and I think you're aware of this, we've discussed this, you're also going to have savings in staff time to process this paperwork and to deal with this. So, you know, in essence, if we amortize it out, we're probably pretty close to a break even at that point. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to apologize for my tardiness.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to apologize for my tardiness. I had an emergency, which has now resolved itself.
Good, good.
Thank you. So I just want to make a comment that, to me, this is an extension and a continuation of what you reported on maybe a couple months ago, month and a half ago, about the reforms that you've made in the Clerk's Office in particular, with efficiency and transparency, and, you know, building up your employees and making things easier for the community in terms of accessing services and taking part in what you do. So just my compliments to you as you continue that good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wayhill. Other comments? I can say that I've used the system during the trial period, and being brand-new totally to all of this stuff, it was really, really easy. And so I appreciate the efficiency as a candidate, and thank you for advancing the technology within the office. Out of curiosity, do you know if this system is being used by all the clerks around all the other counties in the state?
So it is not being used by all of the clerks. I'm not sure of the exact number. So Campaign Finance U.S., they are a Michigan-based company, which is part of why we've used them for so many years, just on showing online the public records of our campaign finance and being able to manually do the process of that. I believe it's something around 15 or 20 counties that use it. It's a fairly small company. There's two individuals, both named Fred, the two Freds that we work with that maintain this. We like them because they are from Michigan, they know the specifics of Michigan campaign finance law. We looked at a couple of other vendors. There's one that is a little bit more prominent that a lot of counties are using, that provides a similar service for almost double the price, but doesn't have the Michigan specifics of how our forms look. Then we also found a vendor that was cheaper, but again, was this national organization that couldn't customize the forms to what we need from Michigan and understanding the specifics of Michigan law.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good job.
Thank you.
And welcome, Allison. Good luck today.
Thank you.
All right. Any other business to take care of or government ops? All right. Move adjournment. We are adjourned. 9:26.
Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd, Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuzina, Commissioner Wayhill.
I'm here.
All right. Commissioner Davis.
Here. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Shall I move?
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Are there any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Moving on. Communications, none. No old business, new business. Resolution 2024-144, approval of an amendment of a contract between Genesee County and Hurley Medical Center in an amount not to exceed $25,000 to provide for further case management, care coordination services for Genesee County's Healthy Start Program.
Support.
And properly, we need a motion.
So I...
Okay. Properly moved and supported.
So moved and...
Support.
All righty. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 2024-167, approval of a request by Genesee County Health Department to travel to the 2024 National Latinx...
Latinx.
Latinx Conference on HIV, HCV, and SUD in El Paso, Texas. The dates of travel are May 2nd through the 4th, 2024. Total cost for four employees to 10 is not to exceed $10,000.
So moved.
And it's grant-funded.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 2024-174, approval of a request by Genesee County's Community Action Resource Department to apply for the 2024-2025 Head Start Grant. Total grant amount is $14,457,170.
Shall I move it?
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Is there someone here?
Ms. Coleman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is this a larger amount that we're requesting for this grant, or is it less?
No, ma'am. This is about the exact same that we receive annually. This is year two of a five-year agreement with our Head Start contractors, and it's about the same. $11 million goes to our primary Head Start, early Head Start, and there's about $11 million...
Okay. So is it based on population?
It is for the service of 318 Head Start children and 322 early Head Start.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 2024-194, approval of a request to place the renewal of the Genesee County Senior Services Millage on August 6, 2024.
So moved.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, could Lynn come up and... Okay. So there isn't any change on this, and just for kind of a, we have some new commissioners, kind of what the millage is and kind of what it covers?
Morning, Commissioners. Through the chair to you, Commissioner Ellenberg. Yes, this is a straight renewal. We're not changing any of the programming or any of the language. We're not lowering the age or increasing the age. We're keeping the millage rate where it needs to be based on equalizations numbers. This renewed with overwhelmingly successful with 72.3% back in August of 2014. So we're coming up to where we do need to look at this for renewal. I always say that the senior millage, we deal with people. So there's 21,502 seniors that receive some sort of services through the millage. So that takes planning, and that takes, we want to, you know, keep moving forward. So there's a lot of planning that when the millage does renew, and also if, for some reason, it doesn't, there's a lot of planning that will need to take place. So we like to do things ahead of time so that we can continue services.
And what is the millage? What is the renewal amount?
Oh, goodness.
So it'll be a little bit less than what it was last year just because of the rollback?
It originally was .7. Now it's going to be like .6859, and it's all based on equalizations numbers. Those have all been confirmed.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. All right.
Further discussion?
Chair.
Commissioner Wayhill.
So to, just to add to the fact-finding here, I guess, this millage supports the senior center operations.
It supports, yes, the senior centers.
Could you talk a little bit about that and how that works?
Yes.
And how much money is involved?
Yes. Each of our 16 senior centers receives a dollar award, either a Level 3, which is the top amount, or a Level 2, which is a mid-level. Back in the day, we used to have a Level 1. That was only Pierce Park, and then they closed. So usually it's a Level 2 or Level 3. And they receive $206,330 if they're a Level 3, and $137,923 if they're a Level 2. This can go for their administrations, their operations, their programming. I think all Commissioners know that they rely on this money to stay open. Without this funding, everything would go back to the local units, and I don't think we would have 16 senior centers here anymore. So annually, they receive $2,689,813 annually.
I just have one more question.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Being the fact that we've added, have we added two more senior centers or one, we had Lossi's?
Well, we had 15. We had 16 to start the millage with back in August of 2006. Pierce closed, and then Mundy opened, so we're at 16 right now.
And is that including Linden?
Yes. Oh, yes. Lossi. Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Just to explain again for Lynn, as far as Lossi, Lossi has always been funded. Unfortunately, it was part of a larger group which had Fenton Township, Fenton, and City of Linden. As far as that goes, those two have opted out. Linden was the only one left, and they decided to take it over and put it under their branch. Am I pretty much summing that up, Lynn? So you're not adding any funds for Lossi. You are just, when we approved that last meeting, what we've done is actually just moved who's actually responsible for those funds.
Correct.
Which is the City of Linden now.
Correct.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Lynn, because I asked a question at the last meeting about all of the different services that seniors are able to be provided with, and you sent me an extensive list. So this is very, it was very helpful. One of the things on the list was lawn care and snow maintenance, and so I, as you know, I had a constituent ask about that because she was on a waiting list. And so my question is, and you told me how extensive that waiting list is, so I wonder if the waiting list is a factor of not having enough money to provide for all the seniors that need this service, or is it a factor of not having enough workers to be able to do the snow plow and lawn care? What's the factor there so we can try to not have such an extensive waiting list?
So many factors play into this lovely program. So we have three crews right now, and those three crews provide services for 168 homes. In order to purchase another crew, each crew with materials and everything costs $140,000. $140,000 would add about 30 to 40 homes. So money does come into play for that. The other thing is to have a fourth crew, St. Luke's currently would not have a place to store that fourth truck and blade and trailer and mowers and all of the equipment, so there's some concerns about that. Also, you have to find, since it's through their program for bringing young men that have been maybe incarcerated, you know, learning a skill and learning a trade, they have to also find a supervisor that can supervise those gentlemen for this program, and there are different requirements for that supervisor position. The other thing is, this is just a need in the community. I mean, we want our seniors to stay in their homes as long as we can, as long as they safely can, but that also means snow removal or snow maintenance and lawn services are needed. There's just so much, and I don't think there'll ever be enough money to cover every single need of a senior with the lawn care. And unfortunately, the way spots open up is either somebody passes away, or they move out of their home to assisted living, and then a spot opens up in that route area, because everything is routed. So we always look for our 100-year-olds, our 90-year-olds, our, you know, our veterans, those female seniors that are living alone, the ones that are the most vulnerable, to get them on the list. We look at that list daily. We also make callbacks to make sure that those people are still needed, and we work with St. Luke's on a weekly basis on, okay, this home, there's, you know, it's up for sale. Okay, immediately, we can put somebody in there. So it's constant. We are working on it. But for another 30 to 40 homes, it would cost $140,000 for a new crew with no place to store.
So how, do you know off the top of your head how many routes there are?
There are, well, we have three crews, so three routes. So we have route number one, which is what we call our super seniors. Those are our 100-year-old, 90-year-olds, the ones that are super vulnerable. That's the first crew that goes out as soon as it stops snowing. The second then is branched into like Flint, Burton, Grand Blanc, Lossi, all the other two counties, the other two routes throughout all of the county.
Okay.
And we use the Circuit app, so it routes everything, and we can track them to see where they are for when we get the phone calls. Well, they haven't cleared my driveway yet. Well, they'll be there in 14 minutes.
So if I could do one more question.
Continue.
So the super seniors are 100 and above. What about seniors who are disabled?
They're included in that. 90 to 100 were always our first one, and then we always ask if they want to let us know some of their ailments that might make them a little bit more vulnerable then.
Okay.
So Lynn, and you had mentioned that with St. Luke, they would require some additional facility to store equipment. Do you have any cost numbers on that?
They have not. Bob is still working, I'm sorry, Bob from St. Luke's is still working on a possible location. It's hard because it's actual physical vehicle, so you can't just get a storage unit or, you know, those type of things. And unfortunately, when this program first started, not with senior millage money, but the previous program before they were funded, the truck was stolen. So we don't want that to happen. So we need to really think this through before I would come to you and ask for another approval of $140,000 for all that equipment.
Whenever it could be restored.
Do we interface with VAAA on this particular service?
Actually, you can be proud that this is the only free lawn care and snow maintenance service in Genesee County, and there are no other organizations that provide this service for free.
Can you just remind us how many people are on the waitlist right now?
We're currently serving 168, and we have 204 on the waitlist.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wayhill.
One last question about the millage dollars. Do they support your office, your staff, or do we use other funds for that?
No, we are all senior millage. The percentage of administration cost for this millage to fund my department is only 3%.
Right. Thank you for that. So, and I know I've run nonprofits. I run an office at Mock College, which is extensive, so I know it's important to have dollars to provide that kind of capacity, because you got to have that level of coordination from somewhere to make sure the trains are running on time and that the seniors are being served. So thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Lynn. Okay. We'll have the vote now. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 2024-195, approval of a proposed budget amendment in the amount of $216,000 to provide for the continued operation of the senior center congregate meal program. Funding for this program will come from the senior services.
Shall I move it?
Or millage. Properly moved and supported. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wayhill.
I wonder if both Ms. Coleman and Lynn might come to the microphone. I know the backstory on how we got to this. I think it's probably important for the rest of the Commission to know, as well as the community, that we're stepping in and addressing a need that was presented to us where I think it's justified. So if you all might just give some background, maybe starting with you, Pam?
Yes, sir. We received notification from Valley, I believe it was the beginning, no, the end of January, that they would no longer be able to reimburse for carryout meals at these senior services center. And it created, it was creating a hardship, an uproar, a lot of backlash from the centers, because there are vulnerable senior citizens that depend on those meals, but the trust level is not there because of the current health conditions. COVID is still very real, and they have those concerns. So they want the meals, depend on the meals, but they are not comfortable enough to eat the meals at the senior centers. So their request is that they are able to carry their meals to their personal residence, or have them picked up and brought to their residence by family members. So this created a huge concern, and a meeting was called to try to come to a resolve. And this is where Lynn steps in.
So a little bit of history before that. We had a meeting, our office hosted a meeting with all of the senior centers, as well as VAAA and G Card, to let them, in June, to let them know that this transition was going to happen. The home, the to-go style meals needed to stop. It needed to, because it was going to come out of a different amount of funding. Unfortunately, moving forward, some of the centers did not stop those meals, and therefore, with the new required of billing, billed over $18,000 over budget. So in first and foremost thinking, we want our seniors to have that meal, because some of those meals are their only meal or their largest meal of the day. So this is a Band-Aid to give those senior centers time to phase out to-go meals. This is not the time that we need an uproar over food by any means. So by the millage coming in, providing the $216,000, we'll pay for the overage each month while the centers that haven't transitioned back to the congregate meal style, I'm allowing them to work with their seniors and let them know and get that option out of their newsletter, so that come September 30th, no more to-go meals outside of the senior center. They can do that, but they can do it with different funding. The other piece of it is that we're worldly, and Pam and I did discuss this, that we want G Card to go back to the traditional family-style meal. It's much more aesthetically pleasing having it served that way. It also takes away the idea of to-go, because it's not in a to-go box. So you're encouraging the congregate, the socialization. And yes, that's going to be a change for some people, but change can be good, and we see that as something necessary within the senior center. I praise the centers and G Card for making that transition when we needed to, to the to-go style, to give it an option, but that's obviously because of funding has got to cease. So this is, I can't emphasize this a lot, this is a Band-Aid to get us through September 30th. It's good use of millage dollars. We're also going to need VAAA to really enforce the centers to do this. They're the ones that are truly funding the congregate meal, so they need to enforce the state mandate and rules, which Commissioner Winfrey and I talked about, possibly adding some things in the contract to ensure that this does, that something like this doesn't happen again. So I think this is a wonderful partnership between G Card, the senior millage, and VAAA to assist the senior centers in phasing out to-go meals.
Yeah, and VAAA was getting hit with disallowed costs as a result of the take-out meals. Is that correct?
Yes. It was all, they had to bill it as a home-delivered meal, which was not, and so it took money away from the home-delivered meals budget and not the congregate.
Commissioner Wayhill.
I'll just say, I appreciate the work that you did together to extend it, and I realize, as you say, it's going to end in September, but we, of course, still have seniors who are afraid of eating with others and need the meal, as you say. I know I've developed really good relationships with the centers in my district, and it was of concern to them. So I appreciate you all acting on it, and, you know, they're going to have to obviously work with their seniors to let them know that it's going to end, but it does sound like there's a, therapeutic isn't the right word, but a socialization value in the congregate meals. That's why we have them, right, for senior citizens? So it improves their health, perhaps mental and otherwise, you know, and their longevity as seniors, and keeps them going. So anyway, long story short, I'm grateful for the two of you and the others that worked on this.
Any further discussion? Thanks, Lynn. Thanks, Pam. Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 2024-198, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and various partner organizations to provide medication to STI clinics. There's no cost to the county for this MOU.
So moved.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. If there's no further business before this committee, it stands adjourned. it stands adjourned.
Call the meeting to order at 9:50. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd. Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker. Commissioner Kuzina. Commissioner Davis.
I'm here.
Commissioner Wayhill. You're here, too.
I need approval of the minutes of February 7th.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. At this time, it's public comment. You'll have two minutes to speak. We missed you through the other ones.
Man.
Please state your name and your city.
Arthur Woodson. I've been over there at Maryhoods, referee. We have a serious issue. Judge Barki used to be over juvenile mental health. And right before COVID, they shut it down. And it was a young man over there, 13 years old. They tried to give him a plea bargain for felonious assault. And the lawyer never... The parent. She didn't even know who the parent was. You can tell that the child was affected by the water, mental health, behavioral issues. He just got in trouble yesterday at GIST. We have a serious issue with our youth in the city of Flint. We have a veterans court. And what we need is a lead court. Me and Attorney Layton spoke about this before. GHS, my first time... You know I always talk bad about GHS. But I really have to commend them on their efforts and how they were there today to support that parent. Flint and Genesee County has to come together to find a judge that can take up this endeavor or this initiative to bring the kids in front of a juvenile judge that can assess them and help them instead of locking them up. Because that's where he was headed, to a detention center. And it's no fault of his own because the state poisoned our kids. So that's something that we really need to truly look into. And I thank y'all for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? See you none. Public comment closed. Communications, no old business, new business. Approval of Resolution 2024-172. Approval of a grant award from the Great Flint Health Coalition in the amount of $32,650 to provide for park location assessment and program coordination...
I'll move it.
...at the city of Flint Parks. It's been moved.
Support.
And supported. Any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes. Can we have some more explanation on this? How this is...
I can't hear what you said.
I'm sorry. Can we have some more explanation on this?
So what this is for? This is through Keep Genesee County Beautiful. And it is the REACH program, which is the racial and ethnic approaches to community health. So what they're going to be doing with this grant is you're going to be going out into the parks. It's going to be evaluated. And we're going to be looking at programs to offer that look at food, health, and the sort of health disparities that the population is... That they have.
Well, I was a little confused then because it says park location assessment. That's what I was just trying to... So it's more than... It's more encompassing than that?
Yes.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
Any other questions? See you none. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Resolution 2024-173. Approval of modification number two of an agreement between Genesee County and Sorensen's Groves LLC in the amount not to exceed $14,615.22 for the new contract total of $5,161,346.42 to provide for the installation of a new water supply line. The cost of this modification will be paid from the following account.
I'll move it.
It's been moved.
Support.
And supported. Any discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-182. Forwarding to receive and file a copy of Genesee County's Parks and Recreation Commission 2023 Parks Report.
Move it.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Anybody want any explanation? I think he's there if you want to talk about it. I think we're all set.
You had a good year, I take it?
We did.
Okay. Congratulations.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. See you no other business. This meeting is adjourned. At 9:56.